You're live.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session today. Today is Monday, March 24, 2025. It's approximately 1:00 PM. Mayor Eric Enriquez, and if you could all join me, I'd like to stand in a moment of silence for what took place this past Friday at our Young Park, for our victims, the families, the loved ones, and especially for our community. Have you joined me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start out with our jobs of the week. Sarah Rainey, come up. Sarah?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Rainey. I'm the one-stop operator, or one-stop coordinator for the southwest region of America's jobs center, New Mexico. For our jobs of the week, we have a public educator for the city of Las Cruces, starting at $21.95 an hour. That posting closes on the 28th of April. We also have a police services specialist for the city. That posting starts at $16.76 an hour, and the posting closes on the 7th. We have a financial programs manager at Mesia Valley Community of Hope, sorry about that, and that posting closes on the 18th. We have a sewing machine operator for Manpower Las Cruces. That posting closes on the 16th of April. An emergency management coordinator at OEM for Donaiana County. The position starts at $55,000, and the posting closes on the 2nd. We have an economic development director also for the county. The posting starts at $140,000 a year. There is a hiring incentive as well, listed on the job description, and that posting closes on the 2nd. Just a quick reminder, this week is our annual Mock-It-To-You Rocket. That is the event where the juniors and seniors of Las Cruces come and learn about interview skills, resume, and whatnot. They get their headshots done and learn all about the employers that are here in Donaiana County for them. We also have the Heroes Hiring Heroes Employment Event. We invite everybody out. It is going to be better in focus, but everyone is invited to attend. All the employers will be there, ready to talk to you and see what kind of opportunities we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Again, what are the times on the 25th and the 26th?
So, the Mock-It is actually, that one starts at 9:00. The Heroes Hiring Heroes starts at 11:00 and goes till 2:00. And that, both of them are at the convention center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have pets of the week. Carol?
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nelson, digital content specialist for the animal services center of the Mesia Valley. As a reminder, cat and dog of the week are always available at no cost the week that they are promoted. And for any animal who is in a foster home, please contact the center to meet, to arrange a meet and greet beforehand. And good news, our dog of the week has already been adopted, so we've been having some good success lately. So, it was Erso, a fun dog to have around, but we're super happy to see him go to a home. He was actually abandoned at a fire station about seven months ago. Came in with his sister. His sister got adopted before him, but we're super excited for him. And no cat of the week because our cat intakes continue to be low, and most of our adoptable animals are currently going to rescue. We do want to highlight our long-term residents. Just as a reminder, they're $25 if they've been at the center three months or more. Dora has been at the center 440 days. Alice, 293, and did want to highlight Dora, we are currently seeing a behavioral regression. And so, we would really love all of the support to kind of get a family in that would be willing to work with her and adopt her, because unfortunately, the longer they stay and the longer they regress, it doesn't oftentimes mean a good outcome for them. But we do also have Luna and Tony. Luna's been there 283 days, Tony 276 days. So, we'd love to see our long-term residents get out of the center. And then, this weekend, we have our PetSmart Pals. I got the dates wrong. It's the 28th and the 29th. We're going to be there because it's our big promotion with PetSmart, where we work in conjunction. So, the more adoptions we get, PetSmart actually gives us a little bit of extra funding. And as always, for more information, feel free to follow us on social media or visit our website. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, next, I will go ahead and read a closed meeting statement. We, City Council, met in closed session today, March 24th, at 10:07 AM. Councilor Graham McClure, Flores, Ben Como, and myself were present. Councilor Corrine came in at 11:04. Outside Council, we had Luis Robles and Bonnie DeWitt. Also from the city, we had Bill Ham, Elizabeth Teeters, J.C. Borrego, Ikoni Tamopaya, Brad Douglas, Chief Story Christine Rivera. The closed meeting discussion was limited to the items as stated in the notice. The discussion, the purpose acquisition or disposal of real property or water rights regarding 302 South Main Street, Las Cruces, New Mexico, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 1015-1H8, and to discuss pending or threatening litigation regarding estate of Presley AZ versus Officer Brad Lunsford, Case Number 223, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 1015-1H7, and we adjourned at 12:27 PM. Next, we'll start our work session with Agenda Item 3.1, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget Review.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Rubalcava, Budgeting Grant Administrator. I'm bringing forth a proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. With this budget, a little backstory on the budget process. Moving forward with the Adelante con Carino initiative, the city manager has also incorporated three I's. The three I's are Improve, Innovate, and Image. With the formulation of the budget process, we were trying to incorporate all of these initiatives into it, and so with that, a new budget method was created. We refer to it as a BASE Budget Method. BASE standing for Balanced, Accountable, Sustainable, and Efficient. So, we always aim for our budget to be balanced, so that means revenues and expenditures will match. Accountable, the city manager's direction and vision for this budget process was that we be responsible and we have justifications for our allocations. And with budget, you always want to have long-term financial stability. So, this process also streamlines operations for better budget management. And so, going a little further into what the BASE Budget Method is, it was created incorporating different budgeting methods. So, it does take elements of different budgeting methods, and we formulated a process that would work for the city best. And so, the city manager wanted to incorporate elements of zero-based budgeting. And so, we, the departments did have to do more analysis of their budgets to really understand why we were budgeting and what we really needed. And so, to help the departments, we created three different phases. So, Phase 1 of the budget process was anything that the city was currently contractually or legally required to keep paying. And these had to be tied to any certain obligations that we already had. And then, Phase 2 would be continuing operations at the current service level. Current service level means that you're not going to be increasing the service level that's currently provided. It's what we would need to maintain at the level that it is. And Phase 3, which are new budget requests. These also include one-time, non-recurring items. For Phase 1, to elaborate a little bit, again, it was anything that the city was contractually or legally obligated to pay. The departments did need to show documentation for those obligations, so we looked at any contract terms, purchase orders, anything that showed the requirement was there. This included sometimes job descriptions. These were to cover any essential costs, so we included items such as building rentals, bank fees, other core operational expenses. And this was to be used to serve as a baseline funding level from which any new requests for additional resources would be, need to be justified. So, anything on top of Phase 1 was also justified. Going into Phase 2, these were operating costs necessary to maintain the current level of service, and these also included any sort of community services that were currently offered, for example, the senior program meals. So, those were incorporated into Phase 2 as the, as the current service level. This also included vehicle acquisition fund, vehicle replacements. The only vehicles that were included in Phase 2 were those associated with the VAF or Vehicle Acquisition Fund replacements. Going into Phase 3, Phase 3 included any new budgetary requests, so anything that the departments were not currently doing or increased the service level. So, for example, if they offered a current service to increase that, the increased amount would be in Phase 3. One-time, non-recurring items were also in Phase 3. These included new vehicles, any major or minor equipment, and travel. And new personnel and reclasses were also included in Phase 3. As we started through the budget retreat that was held in December, we spoke about the Tellshore Fund, and we also brought that last year in the budget process. So, we wanted to highlight, again, the Tellshore Fund, and just quickly explain, again, what the Tellshore Fund uses are. It is a restricted fund, and it should be used to support the continued physical, mental, developmental, emotional, and social well-being, safety, and housing needs of City of Las Cruces residents, and to improve the lives of sick, indigent, or low-income people of the City of Las Cruces. So, the Tellshore Fund, we did have some items budgeted from there last year, and so this is why we wanted to provide the definition of Tellshore Fund and its uses. So, now we'll go into, these are the items that were budgeted in FY '25. So, in this table, we're showing the FY '25 budget and what the departments have estimated that they will be carrying over into FY '26. We did want to say that these items are just estimates at this point, and so they are subject to change, but this was the department's best estimate on what they would be carrying forward. All of these were new requests for FY '25. And this second slide is also a continuation of the items that were budgeted in '25 with their estimated carryover for FY '26. So, anything that has zero on it, the departments are estimating that they will fully spend in FY '25, and there will be no need for a carryover. This is the last slide, including the items that were budgeted. You'll notice there's an additional asterisk for FY '24 carryovers. It's noted under the description with two asterisks. So, the total for FY '25 budgeted out of the Tellshore Fund was approximately $28 million, and we are estimating a carryover into FY '26 of approximately $22 million. From the budget retreat that we did, we held a little earlier this year, or in the budgeting process, and so it was held in December of last year, there were some overarching council themes that were identified once the councilor spoke. And so, we did put these into a quick little, in no particular order, just, this is not an exhaustive list, but just to give the, some of the themes that we talked about at that time. So, some of the themes that council identified were thriving community and businesses, social infrastructure, healthcare and outreach, infrastructure, affordable housing, youth programs and services, and public safety. So, these were some of the items that were identified as priorities from council. In order to attempt to incorporate those into the budget, the city manager did meet with the department directors and did, they, they were trying to work through how they could incorporate those priorities with what the department was already working on or trying to work on for the following fiscal year requests. And so, this table shows some of the council priorities, again, not an exhaustive list, but some of the highlighted items that we pulled out from, that tied both with the council themes that we saw, and these were department requests. So, all of these will show that they are FY '26 department requests, and it'll give a priority description. These are not items that have been funded. They had just been requested at this point. City management is still going to, through the process of approving requests, so these are just ones that have been submitted, but there has been no determination on the amount or whether they will be funded. But these did tie to, we incorporated the city strategic planning on there, and the priority description was the request. So, we saw like Spanish translation captioning, mobile integrated healthcare, traffic management, street safety, sidewalk safety, neighborhood traffic safety, recreational activities, Community of Hope improvements, PAL boxing, after-school programs, health coordinator, and library support. Some of these, they were also put in as a description, so there might be multiple requests that could tie into that. The city management is currently going through, the, the budget program did receive about $29 million of requests for Phase 3, just Phase 3 alone, that had been submitted. So, from the $29 million, about $5 million of those have been identified as items that would fall under the council priorities that were discussed at the budget retreat. Again, those that have not been approved, it's just what they're, what we're currently working towards. We did want to put a slide in here about the GRT increase. This was the 0.325% that was approved by voters. This does take effect on July 1st, 2025, and the use of that fund would be to help support public safety, parks, streets, and other critical infrastructure. The latest projected revenue for FY '26 that we have is approximately $10 million for that GRT increase. There are currently no expenses budgeted to that, to that increase. If we just wanted to highlight the projected revenue. The next steps. So, the next steps for the budget process, we have another work session, which is also a work session slash public hearing that is on April 14th, and then we are bringing forward the resolution to City Council for adoption on May 19th. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Any council? Mayor Proton?
Thank you so much. I just have one quick question. On page 10, there, I just had a question about the, I assume this first one with the Community of Hope homeless outreach is the homeless outreach teams they have. Is there a reason for a zero, an estimated need for zero next year?
So, this was just based off of, not any new requests that the departments have submitted, but this was just strictly based off the amount that they were funded for in FY '25. And so, the budget in '25, there was $75,000 set aside for homeless outreach. This isn't saying that in '26, she doesn't, they don't have a request for funding. It's just from that funding that was into FY '25. They're not expecting to carry over anything because they will fully spend it in '25.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, but then also take the moment to say that I think it's incredibly important that we continue to prioritize this program and ensure that there is, that it stays on the budget for future funding because it's an incredibly important program.
Okay, yes, perfect. Yes, this doesn't tie it to any request for FY '26.
Councilor Matisse?
In reading page 10 and then, I think, page 9, flip back to 9. And then, where's the amount that was allocated toward police? I think it was just a million?
There's the Real Crime Crime Center, the 1.1 million.
And this was FY '25 budget?
Correct.
So, if you go back to page 10 and go back to page 9, in other words, almost, am I adding that all upright? In other words, about 16 million was for housing, and that came all from the Tellshore Fund?
If I remember correctly, it was closer to 19 million. I don't have the exact numbers broken down, but we can get those.
That's okay. It's just 14 million, 19 million. It's in that category. And then, 1 million for public safety. The reason I bring this up is I like to see the priority on public safety. I would really like to actually push that for the, for the next budget. That's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to ask, Jacqueline, you, you mentioned the proposed GRT, and you mentioned also the Tellshore Fund. There's also proceeds, like the cannabis proceed funding. Has, is that, is that being talked about? Do we know what kind of projected revenues we're going to have there to be able to budget?
Yes. So, we do have that projected. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we, we do have it budgeted in the budget. We just didn't include all revenue sources here. For the following work session, though, we can have all, all funding sources for the revenue. At that point, we'll be further along with the process and have all revenues and then requests included.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Mayor, if I may? Yes. On April 14th, we'll have more of a, a say in, in the, in the new budget, correct?
Yes. So, on April 14th, we hope that we'll have more information on there. We will have more of a breakdown of the requests that have already been submitted, and anything that we have for approval from the city manager at that time. This was just more of a preliminary, just to kind of explain what we're working through and how the process was laid out to get to this point.
I'd like to share two items with the council now, so they could at least think about it before the 14th. Number 1, I found out that five or six months ago, and because of what happened Friday, mainly with young people, the Las Cruces Public Schools, and I mentioned it to Ms. Ben Como, the Las Cruces Public Schools discontinued their therapy program. They actually had social, social workers and therapists in the school, and they, for some reason, it, they ran out of funds. So, I'd like to see maybe application of our Tellshore Funds to help the Las Cruces Public Schools bring that therapy program back to the high schools. And then, the second item I'd like to see is, there's been a lot of, not mismanagement, but I'll call it surprise management, like MMC, the ambulance service, the leases. I'd like to see us maybe hire possibly a compliance officer, someone that goes through all the contracts and keeps us abreast of, of whether or not we're getting the reports when we're supposed to, and then maybe we don't have a, a closed meeting surprises. So, if, if I could just get that out there for the rest of the council to possibly consider. And thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Item 3.2, Capital Improvement Program, FY '26 Review, and Cynthia Lamillo.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cynthia Lamillo, CAP Manager with Planning and Implementation, and today I'm here to review the fiscal year '26 Capital Improvements Program. Recently, on March 5th, we had the CAP Council Retreat. Recently, on March 5th, we had the CAP Council Retreat, where we outlined the connection between the Capital Improvement Plan and the City Charter. The City Charter states that we need to prepare and submit the Capital Improvements Program and tie the establishment of a relationship between the Capital Improvement Plan and the City's Comprehensive Plan. At the retreat, we also had an interactive budget activity where we encouraged and highlighted the difficult discussions that happen when we have to select capital improvement, investment, and when we have to prioritize multiple community priorities. At that retreat, we also had the opportunity to hear a presentation from Joe Minicosi from Urban 3, where we listened to different case studies on how cities are implementing different or various strategies to develop local infrastructure and developments. At that same retreat, it was mentioned that CAP has an optimistic outlook for this coming year. We know that capital improvement projects are time-consuming, sometimes they span over multiple years, and sometimes we get delays that are unexpected. Because of that, CAP is committed to, to always be in this continual improvement mode, where we try to enhance collaboration and transparency, and we develop innovative thinking as we move forward in our projects. With that, the Capital Improvement Program also go, that goes by CAP, we previously mentioned that is required by City Charter, but it also prioritizes capital needs and identify potential funding sources. As we know, most municipalities have limited funding sources, but that outweighs our infrastructure needs. This process also informs the selection of legislative priorities by aligning our projects with those priorities of the legislation, and most of all, it functions as a tool to help communicate to the public the current city infrastructure investments, along with those that are coming in the pipeline, so all of the projects are coming in the future The Capital Improvement Program produces the CAP document, which is a document that spans for six years. The first year is funded projects, and then it has five consecutive years that are identified as unfunded needs. This is with intent to help the city plan and outline all of our funding needs. The CAP document is guided by city council adopted plans, including the Comprehensive Plan and the City Strategic Plan, but we have others such as the Active Transportation Plan. The CAP relies on several funding sources, which includes and it's not limited to grants, capital outlay, bonds, and loans. And lastly, the document is approved by council and is amended as needed throughout the year to make sure it's aligned with the changing priorities and changing funding sources. The preliminary CAP for this coming year has a total of 299, 91 projects. Majority of them, the 130, are considered future projects, those are projects that we have identified, but they don't have any funding source tied to it. We had 114 carryover projects, those are projects that currently have some sort of funding source to it, but more than likely, they're large projects that need to be completed within more than one fiscal year. We have 44 annual projects, these are projects that are smaller in scale and that they need to be funded year by year, and three newly funded, which are projects that just had received funding for the first time. For the preliminary funding sources, our largest funding source currently is grants. We have 39 projects under grants right now. The second category is other, here we have merged several utilities funding sources, that way, that's why it's a large amount, but there are several accounts, majority of them under utilities, and some other under developer contributions. Next, we have taxes, we have 26 million, bonds, 25 million, loans, 22, tax incremental development district 16, and the smaller funding sources are the Tellshore Fund, park impact fees, wastewater impact fees, and water impact fees. With the CAP document, we categorize projects by categories to help us understand the nature of those projects. This table, which we have two slides for, identifies the department's request for this fiscal year and the total request for the five outer years. We have active transportation, airport, attainable and affordable housing, city operational facilities, and these are facilities like an office remodel or a city hall expansion. The public facilities will be on the next screen. Equipment and IT, nonprofit projects, park improvements, and Parks New. This is the second slide with the categories and the unfunded needs. Public facilities, this is the one that will be all of our recreation center, senior centers, public safety, public transit, resiliency projects, those are helping the community be more resilient, such as electric vehicles and chargers, street news, new, streets improvements, utilities, and other. The other is a single project from Parks and Rec, which is the master plan update. So, because it tackles several categories, we placed it under other, and it's a one-time cost, that's why you will see a zero in the outer year for department requests. This is a graph that compares last CAP with this CAP, and the main intent is to showcase how the trend resembles as last year. The spike that you see is the current fiscal year where departments are asking for funds, and as you see for the outer five years, is dropped down as project gets completed or there's less need for funding, so then the projects continue to move forward. We know that the CAP, the location is also an important factor, and then this next slide, I know it's not the best to see, but we want to showcase the location of our capital projects. The dots will resemble specific project locations, such as a roof replacement, and the lines indicate streets or trail projects. As we can see, majority of the projects are located downtown, and we have a few of them at the airport and on the industrial park. Next, we would like to highlight two newly funded projects, again, these are projects that are receiving funding for the first time. This is from the Communication Department, it's for their access channel, they're needing 181,000, and they have received that full amount from the Comcast franchise agreement. The city has an agreement with Comcast as they provide cable for our community, and part of the agreement is stipulated that a small portion will be set aside for the purchase of equipment. So, that fund has been collecting money, and now Communications Department is ready to procure the equipment to replace existing one, so they can continue with the government access channel. The second is a street project, this is for Alameda Boulevard between South Main to West Las Cruces Avenue. This will be a TED-funded project, and for this coming year, they will be receiving 750, with the rest coming on in the outer years from TED. And this will be a full reconstruction of the street, that will include all utilities and street improvements, such sidewalks, gutter, everything related to a street reconstruction. Next, we want to highlight two recently completed capital improvement projects. The first one is the Mona's Atrium Project, the Museum of Natural and Science, and this project was, was started, initiated in 2022, October 22. So, it has been completed, and this was the renovation of the sales area improvements and the atrium entrance as well. So, we're very happy for the museum that has finalized this project. The second project that is about to be completed is the Brannigan Cultural Center renovation. This was for exterior repairs, including the vigas that you see, some stucco and painting, and this project is about to be completed, it's believed that only a punch item list are pending, but it should be about to be completed. And really quick, I'll share that this project started in 2021, so it took a couple of years, but it's also towards the finish line. Then, the next steps for the CAP, we will release the CAP document on March 21st, 31st. We will have upcoming work session and public hearing in April 14, and then on May 19, the regular city council to present the CAP for adoption. And for that, we have city staff here, you have specific questions on some of the projects mentioned today.
All right, thank you, Cynthia. Any questions? None? Any questions? All right, thank you. Next is item 3.3, the Airport Master Plan. Andy Hume. Next is the Airport Master Plan with Andy Hume.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Andy Hume, and I have the privilege of serving as your Director for the Las Cruces Before you today is a presentation of the newly completed Airport Master Plan, and I look forward to sharing with you a little bit of a introduction or reintroduction of the airport, it's been a little while since I've presented in front of you, so be able to share a little bit of what we've been up to. And then, I'll share a little bit about our planning process, and hopefully excite you, but, excuse me, excite you about the vision that we have for the future of our So, I've had the privilege of serving as Airport Manager since 2018, and we've been really busy since 2018. I'm not gonna read through all of the items here, but as you know, we've had passenger air service now for a few years, we've been very aggressive in getting funding for a multitude of projects that we've been working on, and, and as we've been, when I, when I first got there, we had adopted, this body had adopted the 2017 Action Plan, and in, it was a five-year plan, and about three years into it, we had accomplished just about the majority of that plan. And so, as, as with any plan, you don't want to finish a plan before you start working on the next one, because you end up with a, a gap in time. So, what we started doing was, we started looking at funding to update that master plan, and we were able to secure funding from New Mexico DOT for our next master plan. Now, it took us a little longer than anticipated to complete that master plan, but that is what I'm here to share with you today, the results of that master planning process. So, as with any planning process, and I know that we, we just have gone through planning processes with Elevate and with other master planning processes, other community plans, as with any planning process, having a robust public input process is absolutely essential, and we did so with, with our Airport Master Planning Process. We made sure that we reached out to a wide variety of key stakeholders, we had, we like to host open house style meetings, so we're open for a considerable length of time, typically we do two to four hour blocks of time, so that folks can come at their leisure, we're available for them to come to us, and just come in, ask questions, walk around to various information boards, and just not be rushed through a process. So, we like to do an open, we like to do open house style meetings. We had a coordinating committee that met on a monthly basis, it involved individuals from our Airport Advisory Board, also key stakeholders from various groups on the airfield or who have, who work with the airfield. And then, of course, our advisory board had specific work sessions dedicated to going over various chapters of the Airport Master Plan and vetting the process. So, it was a very robust public involvement process, and with every process, we went through and made sure that we linked it back to Elevate, as we've been working through, as we've worked through the process, and we also had the opportunity to link it to the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park Plan. That plan had, had been adopted a little bit ahead of the Airport Master Plan, and so we were able to make sure that we linked it directly to the Industrial Park Plan. So, yes, there is a fence that separates the two properties, that's, it's needed, but that's all that separates these two properties. We made sure that these two plans are made to work together. So, this is a quick workflow that shows how the FAA wants the master planning process to work. I'll, I'm not gonna read through the entire workflow process, however, there are two, you'll notice there are two rectangles that are of a different color. That's important. The overall master planning process, the FAA does not approve the overall process. They give us the process to follow, but they don't approve it. When the master plan is done, they look at it and say, yep, looks good. However, the forecast and the airport layout plan are actually the two parts of the master plan that must get FAA approval. And believe me, we went back and forth with the FAA quite a bit during this process to get their approval. They challenged our numbers, we went back and said, here, we re-verified, and that actually took a lot of time in the process to make sure that we, we, you know, back, went back and forth with them quite a bit on this process. Now, as a planner, and I've, I've had the privilege of being a planner with this organization for over 20 years, there's one part that the FAA does not have in this process, and it usually fits right up above here before we start with our inventory, and that's a vision. Why are we doing all this stuff? How do we have a master plan that is focused if you don't have a vision first? So, that's actually what we started with. And so, before we went into all of that workflow that the FAA wants us to do, we started with, and we crafted, a vision. And I'm just gonna read this. "Las Cruces International Airport is a thriving, well-connected aviation and commercial aerospace gateway to the city of Las Cruces, the region, and beyond, providing access and economic opportunity." Now, you might be reading this and thinking to yourself, or the folks watching this might be thinking to themselves, is it really? Because we stated this as is, right, in the affirmative present, but that's what a vision is. We think big, and we think in the current time. We think big and we think in the current time. Because if you don't think in those terms, you don't have that current vision, you don't have that current image in your mind of where you want to be. So every time I look out my window at the airfield, I don't see a couple thousand acres of mesquite and brush. I see this. This is what I look for when I see our airport. So that's how we craft our vision. That's what we look for. And yes, it is ambitious, but that's how we see our airport. That's what our coordinating committee, that's what our stakeholders envisioned our airport. And that's what we have as the focus of our master plan. As a support for our master plan, we developed these eight guiding principles. Now, these I'm not going to read, but these are eight guiding principles that are woven throughout the master plan and are the basis for creating our facility needs, creating our CIP, creating all of the other aspects, all of the other ideas for building relationships that exist throughout the rest of the master plan. Now onto our facility ideas. And these are, yes, just as ambitious as our vision. We talk about runway extensions, primarily for Runways 1230, which I don't know if I can, let me see if I can get the pointer here. No, oops. Which runway 1230 is the diagonal one here and runway 826, which extends east-west. Another project is terminal renovation and parking expansion, which will require TSA security requirements. That's infrastructure that we're going to need. We definitely need taxi lane and utility extensions. We've talked about, we've talked about that. We need that to support hangar development. One thing that I can say that was identified in this process is rehabbing runway 523, formerly 422. Actually, that project's underway. I'm very happy to report. We received some funding from the state legislature as well as New Mexico DOT, and that project is under design. We're, we have a little bit of gap in, in construction funding. Hopefully, we're, we're working with the state to fill that gap. But hopefully, we'll be able to report some good news on that soon. But that project is underway. So we're very happy to see some of our infrastructure priorities moving forward. The other idea really that was worked in tandem with the Las Cruces International, or the Las Cruces Innovation Industrial Park, is the idea of developing them as a regional economic development engine. And this was really put forward as the reason for the creation of the Economic Development Department and moving the airport and the industrial park under the Economic Development Department in the first place. And so what we've seen in the last couple of years is the building of some new hangars. And that's great, but we need to see that momentum get picked up. We need to see high-speed internet. We need to see that type of infrastructure improved in our area to support that. Continuing to coordinate with the goals of the industrial park is, are, is really critical. One of the things that we also heard was providing for additional fueling options. The growth of electric infrastructure is going to be really critical. If, if, I don't know if you all have heard of EVTOL, the Electric Vertical and Takeoff and Landing Aircraft? That, the development of that aircraft is really speeding up. And so having electric capabilities for fueling is going to be really critical moving forward in the near future. One of the things that we learned particularly during COVID is we can't have all of our eggs in one basket. We need to have a diverse approach to how we operate our airport. For example, when we, when, when COVID was going on, almost all military activity stopped, particularly cross-country traffic, which a lot stops here in Las Cruces. So when we saw a decline in that, we saw actually an increase in medical traffic, which actually has continued to this day. So how do we make sure that we have a good handle on opportunities to improve our diverse, improve our diverse service at our airport? So we have identified certainly expanding passenger air service, making sure that we continue to support the general aviation that has kept this airport going since its inception, growing with commercial aerospace, continuing to support NMSU and their UAV, UAS programs, and then also continuing to support our military and, and, and providing services that are in, in their interests as well. So that brings me to wrapping up with our next steps. So this is a work session. And so the actions, there's, there's no action today on the master plan, but I want to bring it back to you all for adoption as quickly as possible. And I'll work with the, I'll work with our city clerk and city administration to, to schedule that. Next, though, is an update of our strategic business plan. We've held off on that in order to get our master plan done so we can tie that and link that back to our master plan. And then we can work with our planning and implementation team to get that tied together appropriately. Then we will continue to implement our CIPs. And I use that plural for a reason. Actually, airport maintains four CIPs. So we have, obviously, you heard about the city CIP just before this. And we have the state ICIP, but we also maintain CIPs with the New Mexico Department of Transportation and the FAA. So all of them have a different purpose, but we all, I, I work with each of those agencies to maintain and implement all four of those CIPs. And then I, I put this slide in here, and it's not an overstatement at all that we're going to continue to aggressively pursue a variety of funding options. At the outset, I was very, I'm very pleased to report that we've brought in a little over $19 million in funding from outside of the city. But it's really a drop in the bucket compared to what we need. If we're talking about even from the maintenance perspective, but certainly if we want to implement the items that we're talking about in our facility needs, even $19 million is just a drop in the bucket for, for what we want to grow our airport. So we're going to continue to pursue these funding opportunities. And I think everyone's seen a variety of this slide at, at one point or another. Certainly, as I hope everyone maybe has had a chance to enjoy the flight from here to Albuquerque. If you haven't, I encourage you to maybe give that a try. Yes, one of these days, hopefully soon, we'll have service to Phoenix, perhaps service to DFW. It'd be great. Those are hopefully in our future soon. We're working very hard for that. But ultimately, we want to connect Las Cruces to New Mexico, the world and beyond. And with that, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate everyone's attention. And I will do my best to address any questions that the, that you or the council may have. Thank you. And we, we do have the consultant, representative from the consultant who worked with us on the project. And there may be others who were involved with the project here who, here in the audience.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Any questions, anyone? Counselor Corin?
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Thanks for sharing all of your, I remember talking about this back in the day on our TSI committee, so I appreciate seeing the, the product. I know that commercial air service is a little bit the thing that everyone, it's like the lead in this that everyone is wondering about. But I noticed that the master plan sort of suggests that Dallas is already online and that Phoenix is coming soon. And I know that those are things that we weren't able to, to do. Can you give any sort of summary about what the, what the most significant barriers are to meeting? Or, I mean, now, again, the master plan suggests that these already happened. So I think I would be curious to know what the shift in timeline is and what are the barriers, what among the things that are sort of part of the CIP or part of other things that we have to consider in the budgeting process, if that can make a difference in, in that timeline or not? Please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Council Corin, the, the two items that are the biggest barriers, one is a terminal that will be able to support the TSA requirements, particularly for the larger aircraft to get to DFW. Our current provider does not fly, is not going to be able to fly to DFW. The second is having what's called an MRG, a Minimum Revenue Guarantee. In order to get the service started, a provider needs to know that they're going to be able to meet their expenses. And so having a minimum revenue guarantee provided to them until they get the, their numbers up, their load factors up to the point where they're meeting their expenses, they're, they're making money, is, is the second requirement. I'd say those are the two biggest requirements. Our current runway is long enough to support regional jets. So that's not really an issue. And we have the instrument landing capabilities for those types of planes, so that's not really an issue. But it's the terminal and it's the MRG that are really the, the two main issues.
I guess I wonder how, how much are the, in particular, the terminal, which is, I assume, one of the capital improvements that maybe is, maybe we just saw. I'm not sure. I think there was about $6 million projected. So I'm curious what that looks like, if it's our existing one, if we have to raise things, what does, what would those changes be?
Mr. Mayor, Council Corin, one of the design ideas that we have is taking our existing hangar. The city owns a hangar. We could take that existing hangar, build an addition onto it. We have a space next to it that we could build an addition and utilize, basically retrofit that hangar and the addition to provide a, we would call it a transitional terminal until we can build a new facility that would cost, it would cost a lot more and be more of a long-term solution. But we could, we could do that in that $6 million range. That's really where that cost estimate came from. But it would be retrofitting an existing building that we have.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to understand the context of where, where that, if that wasn't asked and if it was coming through in this and if we understood the implications of it or not. I think it's, it's important for the conversation. Thank you.
Counselor Graham?
Thank you. Following on that, Andy, what is the tipping point for when we would need to upgrade our firefighting facilities, capacity, equipment?
Excellent question. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Graham, it would, it would be going to this, this type of service that we were just talking about. Right now, we have what's called an index A service. And for the type of aircraft that we have, the eight-seater aircraft, that's appropriate. That type, that level of service is appropriate. If we go to the regional jets that we were just talking about, we would need to upgrade to index B, which does require an increase in our service, an increase in our equipment. And also, it would probably require an increase in, probably a need initial personnel.
Counselor Matisse?
Mr. Hume, you've done a great job in the years you've been there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
On the increased equipment for regional aircraft, what's the control tower situation? Are you, do you have a full-fledged control tower that would be needed?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Matisse, at this point in time, a control tower is not needed. Typically, control towers are needed once you get to a certain number of aircraft operations. If you have regular aircraft operations that exceed 100,000 per year, that's when you start needing a control tower. Right now, we're in the 35,000 to 40,000 per year range. So we're, we're not anywhere close to, to that number of operations per year yet. We, we certainly monitor that year over year, but we're, we're not at the point of needing a, a control tower at this point.
In, in 10 years, what type of increase to get to 30,000? Where were we 10 years ago?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Matisse, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. I'm, I'm, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can, I can get that information, though.
Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I just, and, and I, I want you to know, Andy, this is absolutely not about you or your leadership or anything that, that I'm, that what I'm about to say. But for me, I, I wasn't here when, when the initial sort of parameters for what the future of, of air traffic will be in Las Cruces. And I understand that there are a lot of folks who are really anxious to see passenger air go to Phoenix and Dallas. But I have to acknowledge that from my own perspective, a really big investment in the airport for passenger air service doesn't really feel like it necessarily reflects what I think some of our values are or our biggest, most pressing needs. And so I just, I just want to say that in this, in this context. I don't know what's in the capital plan. And again, I, I want you to know that it's not, not that I, I have any doubt that you have the ability to make things happen. I know, I know that you do. I just sort of want to beg a question of, of how, what kinds of investments should we make? And what populations is this serving? And what's the ultimate impact that we want to make with, with money? And for me, this, this conversation, I don't know that I necessarily would, and I, we did, we did this a little bit in our, in our CIP retreat, and it did make me reflect on what, what my values are, my understanding of what our values are. And I don't know that passenger air service to Dallas and Phoenix are things that I would choose to prioritize in a, in a capital improvements process. And so I just want to say that to be transparent in this conversation because it's pretty ambitious and it, it does have some implications, I think, for our budget and what we understand. And, and so I just sort of want to own that, that in this conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. And also, Andy, that, that's kind of like the question I have. Like, you know, moving forward, what kind of investment are we really looking at? With this master plan, looking at the future, what, what kind of investment, funding, money are we looking in over what timeframe?
Mr. Mayor, let me go, let me go back to slide three here. So up to this point, Mr. Mayor, there's, I'm going to answer this in two ways. The first is that the numbers here that I have on this slide reflect capital and other grants. So this includes the Rural Air Service Enhancement Grant in the, under, under the state grant and, of course, the FAA grants. So here, this is all, these are all funds that are coming from sources outside of the city. And the $1 million is, are the, the match, the matches that the city has come up with. Now, this is since 2018. The other source of funding are the operational funds, personnel and operations. And so I don't have the numbers off the top of my head year over year. And I can work with finance to get those. But those are the funds above the revenue that the city or that the airport generates from leases and other fees that this, that the city provides to operate the airport. And I, I don't, again, I don't have those numbers with me, but I can get those from finance. So there's, there's really, there's, there's two. One, one is our numbers, these numbers here, which really reflect capital and, and other grants. And then there's the personnel operating.
Right. But I guess my, my question is really, moving forward, what's it going to cost?
Well, the, I would refer to the, the CIP. Well, the, I would refer to the, the CIP. I mean, when, if, if we want to move ahead with runway extension projects, you know, runway extension projects are going to run into the tens of millions of dollars. But again, we would seek grants for those. We would work with the state legislature for funding on those. The new runway down in Santa Teresa, I believe, costs $40 million. But the state legislature provided most, if not all, of the money for that project. We are working on a, we're going to be replacing our automated weather system and our rotating beacon. I believe it's going to be in the neighborhood of $650 million, or $650,000. The FAA is providing 90% of the funding for that. And then, you know, the city is only, only has to provide 5% of a match for that. So, you know, again, those, those funding sources are, are out there through the FAA and through the state legislature. The city generally has to come up with, you know, 5%, 10% for matches. And I work with planning and implementation to make sure that those items are prioritized in the city CIP.
All right, thanks, Andy.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Matisse.
Andy, I think that was a good mention. Maybe Chris could help us too on the economic development cooperation. In Santa Teresa, on the $40 million investment, you know, being there eight and a half years at the Border Authority, I watched the Santa Teresa Airport grow. And they had the same vision that you had. And they brought a lot of jobs, you know, like Dell computers. A lot of the aircraft land there that go with Dell computers and they employ close to 10,000 people. So there's a lot of employment that comes from building an airport and linking it with an industrial park. I, I think that's a great, a great vision. And if 5% is only our investment, I think that's really a very inexpensive investment for the numbers that you'll get back. Maybe Chris could actually add to the economic development component of the industrial park and an airport. You probably have a lot of experience with that. Did you want to say a few words? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think he'll let Elizabeth, our Economic Development Director. Chris is now the Director of Community Development.
I'm sorry, Chris, I, I should read my emails.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Elizabeth Teeters, Economic Development Director, as the mayor was saying. So yeah, I, I think when it comes to the industrial park, Andy and I have the same, the same scope that we need the infrastructure. And that's in his, that's in his plan as well as mine. But we are working on the collaboration with the airport. So we've been focusing on the south side of the industrial parks, so south of I-10. But we're now starting to work on replating the north side and what that's going to be a collaboration with the airport to figure out what kind of businesses we can attract that need airport access or could potentially get it in the future. So that's the next phase that we're entering into with the industrial park.
Thank you and congratulations on your new position.
Counselor Flotis.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Andy, for your presentation. I think it was very thorough. And, and Counselor Matisse's questions and comments are helpful insofar as letting council members and the city know that it's really, it's a, it's a goldmine, a potential goldmine. And, and you've brought it up to standard. I've seen you go through all the hoops and, you know, sit down, walk, run, don't run. And, and bringing the airport up to, to be at least an intrastate. And, and your work with the federal government and getting funds for, for the airport. You've come, the airport has come a long way because of you. And, and I see it as an economic development issue because it, it opens up, there's the industrial innovative area there. And, and we can bring in a lot of businesses there. I know that there was one business that wanted to come in, but, well, that was years ago during COVID. But at any rate, I want to thank you for it, not only getting these end results, but all the battles you've had to fight. And I know that Senator Soles has been very supportive of, of our efforts. And I want to thank him too. Please thank the, the senator for me. And, and I think that you've had a lot of success with the, the funds from the state legislature. Not just the legislature, but the, what is it? The, I don't know, there's an economic development department or tourist department or something. But I just, I want to thank you because, yes, we, we need a lot of, we need a lot of money in other areas without a doubt. But this is, this is a goldmine. And this is something that we should prioritize and support you, I certainly support you, to continue with your quest. You've been very successful. You have your, I see some members of the advisory committee here. And, and they're very difficult to deal with, I know. Just kidding, just kidding. They don't have a sense of humor. At any rate, I just want to thank you, Andy, for all your work. I know what you've been through. And, and the airport has a different feel to it. And I, I think that we'll probably be, hopefully be operating intrastate and then connecting us to the rest of the world. I personally have to drive to El Paso Airport several times a year. And every time I drive there, I think, golly, you know, I should be driving to our airport in Los Cruces, connecting me to where I want to go. And I, and I think that's going to come sooner than later. And again, thank you, Andy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think all, that's all the questions, Andy. Thanks. That's all our items. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. This is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomel?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.